I'd like to call to order the Tuesday, November 1st meeting of the Montana City Council. And note that for the first time in 10 years, we'll get to watch election night not here this year because of the way the calendar has fallen. And first item tonight, we're all called, fellas, if you would.
Counselor Carey?
Here.
Counselor Johnson?
Here.
Counselor Milligan?
Here.
Counselor Schaefer?
I'm here.
Counselor Silvernagle?
Here.
Mayor Obers?
Yes. Rise for the five slum please.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. First item tonight is the consent calendar consisting of the minutes from the council meeting and work session of October 18th, November 2016. If I can have a motion to approve those minutes.
I'm going to approve them both.
Move in seconded in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And with that, we'll adopt those minutes. Short mayor's report tonight, I had Mayor's Coalition, which is a gathering of, I don't know how to sort them, only odd because you never know who's going to show up, of mayors from the Marion Polkian Hill area, and we gathered at Anna Peterson's home in Salem. And had a nice gathering, a nice dinner at night, and a chance to see some of the local mayors. Had last Friday of the month, every month is the Mayor's Breakfast, which we meet over in Dallas, and an opportunity to see the Polk County mayors, and also, you know, various representatives of other governments. We often have, one of the federal elected officials will have represented there, and Sedcor, and then some others. So, a nice opportunity to get together and hear what everybody's up to, and there were no great shakes, no special items there, just, you know, what each city is up to. And I continue my work on the distracted driving task force, and we're moving toward sample legislation, legislative concepts sent forward. Apparently Oregon's original cellphone law was thrown out in court. Basically, it says if you're talking on the phone, and so if I had the phone to my face, but the officer doesn't see my lips moving, I was not talking on the phone. So, that's why we have to now revisit this, and the folks at ODOT who's been working on this and looking at other laws from around the country, have done a really good job of identifying the things that go to leading to distracted driving, at least in terms of portable electronic devices. So, it has been one of those exercises in working out devil's advocate, worst case scenario, what if, refining the language, it's been a really interesting experience. I've never done anything quite like this where it's literally parsing word for word, what does that mean? You know, so, so it's been, it's been good, and I have been invited to continue work on that through, you know, even after January, when I conclude my term as mayor, I've been asked to continue on that task force, so, good stuff going on there. And that's all I have. So, I will now turn to reports from council reps to the boards and commissions, and ask Counsel Laura Silvernagle to tell us about the seniors.
Great. Thank you, Mayor. Was not able to make the meeting last week, I was out of town, but there are a couple things I'd like to announce or at least mention this evening. So, the Holiday Bazaar is November 12th from 9:00 to 3:00. The November Potluck has been delayed, so it's usually earlier, but it's going to be the third Friday this month due to Veterans Day, so it's November 18th at noon. The Veterans Day, they will actually have a breakfast that morning, 8:30 to 10:30, and that's free for veterans. And the open house date has been set as January 19th for the senior center with the new addition. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Counselor Milligan?
For the Arts and Culture Commission, on this one, I think I had a conflict when you had a meeting recently with the two commissions?
It's coming up, it's, I was going to update the council about tonight.
Okay, that's why I haven't been to the meeting. It's in a week or two. So, we'll have a lot more in-depth conversation with Mark during the work session as to what's going on with the combination of arts and culture and the four of the life commissions.
Very good. Counsel. Lord Carey?
Mr. Mayor and members of the council, the Minnet Board met on October 27th, that's Thursday passed, and, you know, we had not met the prior month, and, and so the agenda was fairly full this, this last time, and, and in the report category that I'll pass on to the, to the council and anyone here and then who are watching. September marked the first, you know, the end of a first full year of $100,000 a year net profit, you know, for the first time. So, for the last year, they've been over $100,000 in monthly net revenue, so that, that certainly was a bit of a milestone, and that they're pleased with that. You know, we've talked about, and Don mentioned when he was here last time, that there's been a bit of a change in policy on how we deal with promotional activities, promotional rates, you know, for signing up and so forth. Those have basically all sunsetted at this point, and the, while there's an anticipation that there'll be a little uptick in revenue as a result of that, not entirely sure how many subscribers they may lose along the way October, once those numbers are final will be a bit more of an indicator of that. But nonetheless, there hasn't been a lot of pushback on that from subscribers, so, that, and that is one of the recommendations the consultants had, so that's, that's a positive, I believe. The Board has asked management to develop a sort of plan and a strategy for migrating from BPON technology to G-pond technology or beyond, and, and how to best do that. It won't be a wholesale deal for a variety of reasons, but, but there'll be a migration plan that will move those that are particularly in need of that, the higher data users in particular would be probably the, early on, and then as, as new subscribers come on, probably the G-pond as well. So, that's sort of moving to the next level of technology, not cutting edge, but nonetheless next, so that's, and it'll take them a while to get that. That's probably going to be part of their strategic plan, which is something else that they've been working on. They've had a little bit of a delay on, on that because some of the sort of subcommittees that they're using have had a hard time maintaining quorum or establishing quorum, so they haven't been able to move some of their, you know, finalize on what they'd like to do in the timely way that, that they had laid out in their, in their calendar. So, you know, we've urged them to move ahead as they can, and, you know, a good strategic planning document is better than a hurried one, and so to go ahead and take the time to, to do that. We're in the process of developing our three-year performance evaluation for General Manager Don Patton, and we'll be working on that in the next, not too distant future. And I guess that is it. We, for those that would like to attend these riveting meetings, typically it's the fourth Thursday, well, because of Thanksgiving, November 17th is the scheduled date. That's at the Henry Hill Education Center over in Independence. That's November 17, 7:30 to by God AM, and no coffee or donuts are provided. That concludes my report.
You sound thrilled about that.
Well, you know, for the glucose tolerant, they'd love to have that.
Okay.
Can I tag on to something?
Yeah.
I was just looking at on the website earlier today, and Comcast SportsNet Northwest is no longer going to be provided next month, so you're going to see a $2 reduction in your, in your fees, but the laser games will be hard to come by. But you get a reduced rate?
Well, that's been an ongoing battle with that particular outfit, so, I don't think they're the only ones. Okay. Any community announcements? That one kind of qualifies as a community announcement. Does anybody else have anything?
I would like to, I don't know if it's right time, but the trick or treat event, was it yesterday already? Yeah, that was well received, not only by my family, but, gosh, it's got to be the first one in a couple of years that hasn't rained for the whole night, but all the businesses opening their doors. It was just awesome to see everyone embrace that event and see a parking lot on Main Street from Montana to that all the way back past the banks at some point, because there were so many kids and families walking up and down the streets. And it was great to see Chief out at the library, and it was just another year of fantastic event, and thank you for everyone that put the work in to do that, that was fantastic.
And just to note, if I can add on to that, was, Jesse's absolutely right, it was definitely heavier. It was, a couple indicators, we at City Hall ran out of candy early, we just ran out because they were just coming in droves.
You sent somebody for more, didn't you?
Thought we'd be fished around, found that we could, you know. But then another one that's interesting was timing, is it typically around like 5:30? It's pretty light, not last night, it was still, there was still lots of people up and down, and very small group of Chris, our librarians, one of the head people that organizes that, ties in, and so, yeah, it's, it's one of those, those kind of really kind of treasured events that start out really fast and it keeps getting better.
Well, I think it's, I went downtown last night, walked around for a while, and there was a lot of people there, but you know what else it does? It cuts down the people in the neighborhood, because most of them are tired, or they've got their sack full of candy.
We were kind of wondering, we had some discussions today, and a couple of people in different neighborhoods thought they were a little bit lighter, and they were wondering.
And I think it was downtown people.
And I talked to many parents, and they are thankful for that, they don't have to go door to door with their kids, but you can also, if you're really overzealous, you could go down to the university dorms, they put on a safe trick or treat as well right after 6:00 to 8:00, so, we didn't hit that one, thank goodness, but, years to come, I'm sure we will, but, my parents only had 1,250 trick or treaters last night, so they, they closed the dorms.
I only had 58, and they were all over elementary, because I had maybe five little ones. Our first year on Sacred Land was well over 300 kids, so, there's been a shift in wear and talent, I think, and, you know, so on, so, anyway, good, and good event. Thanks, Chris, and Mark, I'm sure your, your hand is in that as well, so, thanks so much.
I love businesses.
Okay, managers' report.
Yep, the first item up, we got your quarterly report handed to you, and this is the first one for the new fiscal year, so the start in July, so, you'll see some carryover projects from the prior year, and then some new ones out, and so if you take some time to go through it, you'll see some different things that departments are doing. Your council goals, I've got a shorter list there, the additional street finding, we had our task force, we haven't really got the consultant lined up, Russ has made some progress on that, we've got it pretty much lined up, we've got some direction, now we just need to get it on the street, a bit going on that. The senior center expansion, that was noted. One that's an interesting one is when we changed the roof material, we had to move the beam, remember that nice beam that when you walked into the room?
The post?
The post, it's gone. Got moved over toward the stage, so now it was completely open when you come in.
Cool.
It's pretty funny, I think some people are kind of like, that's the best thing, who cares about the extra rooms and everything?
Right.
Get that post out.
Pretty good.
That was a good thing. City Hall facility, having any effort on that, and then obviously amphitheater, got that in use, we got some kind of tweaks and adjustments, and then one we're going to work on is, is a use policy as far as renters go, because you have a very different facility, and so we'll get there. And then just, just an interesting one, that you build a structure, you think it's used for a certain thing, so in this case you would think holding concerts and music, and what's amazing is the other uses that we have out there. You have just kids going up there and doing their own concerts, you have people just sitting there, you know, eating some lunch or whatever. We had a photographer, we kind of courted him to architect to get some decent shots, and then they'll come back and do some more, and you had huge shots of all the kids doing bicycle stunts, so, you know, on the rail, on the slate wall, and up on the stage, and, you know, just the different ways you can use things.
I saw an age, like an 8 to 10 year old could do all these off the stage.
Okay, very good. Anything else?
Yep, no, so otherwise, just, yeah, look through, if any questions, let me know.
Thanks, Scott.
I got a couple.
Okay, go ahead.
I mean, we're just for the whole thing, I mean.
Oh, yeah, you think I'm sorry.
Well, okay, what I see here is, is a program that we're going to obtain a consultant to review the current rate on their sewer view, we're hiring a consultant on their stormwater.
Where are you?
I'm on page three and four, and this is on Public Works, okay, and then we're hiring one on the stormwater waters and streets, basically. What I'm asking is, and maybe I'm way ahead of myself here, but what about those three people we hired in Public Works that were supposed to help on this, to try to cut down on some of this consulting?
Oh, completely different, these are.
Are they even hired?
Well, yeah, well, they aren't.
Are they, are they hired, that's all?
No, no, but those are, those are field people, these are, these are accountants and that kind of thing.
Right, but we were trying to, when we first discussed this at Bud, we were trying to see if this, and John brought this up too, was to see if we couldn't cut down some on the consulting, you know, like, be able to figure out our cost rates, be able to go into computer and see what, you know, some of the background that they needed that we could do that helps cut the costs, and that's one of the things I noticed here again, or backup.
Yeah, those are completely different functions, but the guys that we're hiring are working out in the field with shovels and fixing valves and things, the studies are done by consultants because they've got that expertise, and they're basically, they're finance people.
Okay, any other questions, council? Quarterly report? Okay. What?
Hey, Mr. Mayor, this is the City Council, I'm the Mayor's Finance Director, so, the quarterly report for the fourth quarter of fiscal year 1516, so this takes up through June 30th, 2016. We always kind of delay this one a little bit because our audit field work, it's preferable to can get the audit field work done, and that gives us all of the adjustments to close out the year, and so we were able to do that, the auditor's just included different work here about a week and a half ago, and so, I went through and just highlighted some of the things that I thought were, you know, that kind of caught my eye as I go through the, the comparison year to year from 30th, 2015 to 30th, 2016. And when you look at the revenues in the general fund, we were off a little bit on our state shared revenues, that would be the shared revenues, also the liquor tax, and they actually notified us in the middle of the year and told, just asked us with all, all of the, all of the state agencies that have revenue sharing, that those revenue sharing numbers would be adjusted down, and so we factored that in for our fiscal year 1617 budget as well. Anyway, so that's, that's why, that's off a little bit, but still, when you get to the bottom of the general fund revenues, we came in at just over 100% of what we budgeted, and our expenses, we were, we were under budget on all of our expenses, yet when you look at what we, kind of the bottom line, we dropped our general fund reserve at the end of, ending fiscal year 1516, down to 1.26 million, so, a drop of about $224,000. And when we did our budget estimates, we had thought that we would initially, our cash projection showed us dropping 245,000, but then we anticipated that we would get some type of a, you know, that we, that things would come in quite that low, because that's historically what happens, and so we kind of stuck our finger in the air and estimated about 125,000 better than the, than the 245 drop, so we thought we'd come in at about 120,000 drop on the reserves, and instead we're 223,000, 224,000, so we're about $104,000 additional than what we thought we would be. And so as I looked at that, the driver really is, there's no smoking gun, there's not like, you know, everything was good except one department or one set of revenue just didn't come in, it wasn't any of that, it was just, really, what occurred is we just are budgeting closer to where we're actually coming in, and that's something we've been working to do, and we, we actually did that, we were about 4,000 bucks off of our revenues, came in a little bit better on our revenues, and about $70,000, yeah, 70,000 better on our expenses, so, the total of those two, 22-ish thousand rather than 125, that's, that's what happened. So, what that does, looking towards this coming year, well, actually the year we're in right now, 15, or 1617, rather than having what we thought we would end up with, again, just kind of guesstimating, our budget for the beginning number for our, our carry forward was 1.242 million right in there, so we're, we're, we actually did better than that by about 20,000, but we had thought that we would be like 1.365 million, so, what that means is, when you look at the year that we're in right now, 1617, we're coming into this year with about 100,000 less than we thought we would have, and so if, if we, you know, rather than, than you go to the end of what we thought we would have this year, and we figured it was going to be around 1.24 somewhat million, we had about 100,000, 120,000 we were drawing is what we estimated, so if you take another 100,000 out of that, puts us down to like 1.2-ish, or 1.12, and then if, some other things aren't happening, like one of the things that was, we had built into this budget was the sale of our old police station, if that weren't to happen, then we're actually dropped below a million, is what my, you know, just what our estimate is, if we plug all that in as, as budgeted, so, all that means to me is that, just like we've talked, certainly we're, you know, pressure is kind of mounting on our, you know, you kind of hit the peak and you start to come down, and so it's, you know, how, how measured is that, you know, coming down, is it, you know, what rate of descent are we, are we, you know, running and managing that, so it's something certainly we'll want to be looking at as we go through this fiscal year and heading into next when we do the budget for next year, but, all stuff that we're watching. So, that's the general fund, and then when we look at the other funds, the ones that popped out of the year, the water fund, I mean, you don't really see it in the personnel services, because we did a $75,000 budget adjustment for personnel services, so the personal services, when you look at the report, it's 95% budgeted, is where the total cost came in, but that's because of a, of a large adjustment there, and the driver behind that is all the work that the technicians have been doing, the staff has been doing around the automatic meter reading system, changing out all the meters, we continue to work on that, and so, a lot of their time, more than is typical, was spent doing that, so what that did then is, you have, we had more costs, there's no costs in the water fund, and then there were, actually it turned out to be less in the street fund, that's 10, that's what got the, you know, they basically pulled hours from the street fund that they would have probably done there, but they, they just had, you know, only so much nanours that they can spread, and so they, the difference went there, so, that resulted in actually a little bit of, again, a addition to the fund balance, and that fund is, is a challenge to do, but because that fund operates typically a little more, the revenues that we give from the state, the state portion of money, that, the gas tax doesn't cover everything that we do in that fund, but in this case, it did, because we just had less expenses, so that was, that was one thing that I noticed. If you look in the electric fund, you'll see this in the Minnet Fund as well, because we refinanced the debt, the city's OEC debt, that resulted in both revenues being over budgeted and our debt service being over budgeted, and the reason that is, is because you recognize all of the debt when it's paid, the old note gets paid, so all that expense you show, and then, of course, when you get the new loan, you show all of that too as revenue, so it ends up inflating both, both sides, the revenue and the expense side, and so, so that's why those numbers were kind of different, a little bit odd, just because of the, of the refinance. And then also in the electric fund, there was the loan that was going for the amphitheater, so that, that was part of that, most of the draw on that fund, that fund had a $570,000 draw on, on the reserves there, you know, 500,000 when that was really that loan, so, and then.
And that, interrupt, just, and this, this one here, yeah, but don't we get like 116,000 back or something this year? I mean, it's not, it'll start the other way, is what I'm saying, has this year.
Yeah, plus interest too, so there's, there's a, there's a, there's a benefit.
Okay, that's obvious.
So, you just see the, the cash going out initially, yeah.
Right, okay.
And then tourism fund, that one has additional revenues that weren't budgeted, and what happened there was the, there was a rural tourism studio grant that we received in 1516, and we were going to place that into the grants fund, but the more we thought about it, we decided it maybe would be better to show that in the tourism fund, because that, our match comes from that fund, and it's tourism related, so we went ahead and plugged it in there, so that, that bumped revenues a little bit, the grant revenues received was just under 12,000, and we had about 3,500 in expenses, so, and then we'll continue that grant into this fiscal year as well, so those funds will be reflected there in a, in a few months time. And then the last thing is the urban logistics, the amphitheater, not all of the amphitheater costs were included in 1516, the work was largely done in 1516, but not quite, and so there's a little tail end of it, another 104,000 coming in the current fiscal year, close that project out at 1.242 million, so, that's, that's the financial part of it in terms of the city funds and the operations on the investment report. That one, just pretty straightforward, fortunately, interest rates are finally starting to slowly ever so slightly increase, we're not quite to 1% in the local government investment pool, but moving in that direction, and as a result, that did miss a little bit more than in the prior year, focus fiscal of 1516 was just over 100,000, which was about 9,000 more than the prior year, or total interest. City has about a little over 17 million in, at this time, cash on hand, so, that is my report, if there's any questions, we'd be happy to answer any of them.
Where, you might have explained this already, but I might have missed it, looking at the electric fund and the, like, revenues, quite the increase in year-to-date actuals?
Yeah.
What's going on there?
Yeah, the, the 9 million versus a 5 million, or five, not quite 6 million better, you know, budget, that's the, that's the refinance of the debt, so that extra.
Yeah, we hadn't given.
Yeah, it's about two and a half to 3 million dollars.
Substation.
Yeah, for the substation, right. Yeah, so, so we paid off a loan and we got a new loan, so we recognized the revenue as the new loan, and the payoff as the old loan.
Okay, I knew I missed something.
Yeah.
You'll notice that debt service went up considerably, and if you subtract the debt service from the revenue, you come back to a number that's more like last year.
Yeah, like I got it.
Yeah, well, and that's the same thing with Minnet, that was 1.5 million, we're 5.8, and, you know, in Minnet, when I'm looking at the prior year actual, it says 1.5 million, and then it says this year, the actual to 2016, it says 5.8 million, so that's the same thing, that's refinancing has caused that.
Right, yeah, that was a 4.7 million dollar loan that was refinanced.
So, that goes, okay, so next year we'll be back down to 1.25 or something?
Right, yeah, and the revenue in that fund is the debt service that we received to pay, make the payment, so, yeah, and then this year it was the debt service plus of the new loan.
So, is that why we only be transferred over almost the full amount allocated, the 1.2 almost?
No, we, we actually transferred, I think it was about 678,000, something like that.
So, pretty consistently?
Yeah.
For four years?
Yeah.
That's been pretty even for about three years, hasn't it? Okay.
Any other questions, council?
Any other questions, council?
Mark, you, you, you talked about the, you know, the fact that we had an actual draw on reserve 1516 of 224, which is different than they anticipated 120, so the $100,000 difference, and then what did you say was the impact on our carry forward?
So our carry forward, in terms of what, so when we did our, our estimating, and we were estimating where do we think we're gonna come in at the end of this fiscal year that we're in now, 1617, so we, we budgeted for 1.24 million is what we have on our budget, our beginning number. But we also, based on our, our historical kind of performance, we typically will do, you know, that's a conservative estimate, and so we normally will come in with more than that, and so we, in trying to estimate at the end of this fiscal year, we said, well, what do we think our, our actual beginning balance and balance is gonna be in that fund, and so we bumped that up 125,000, and instead of actually getting 125,000 more, we actually only got 23,000 more. So, so what that means is we're just starting with, in terms of our estimate, we're starting 100,000 dollars lower than we thought we were gonna at the beginning of this fiscal year, which means that we certainly are, that's a, that's, that's gonna make it more likely that we're gonna draw more at the end of this fiscal year than we thought we were gonna.
Well, that, that declining fund balance is something that we're both aware of and concerned about, and, and I think, I think we're using it wisely. But are there any, you know, because we have this, and, and we're already 100,000 or whatever it was, down, any, do we have any concrete plans? I guess I would ask that in part either to Scott or to, to Mark, or are we just gonna, I mean, and, and I mean this in the best of terms, let it roll and, and, and see how we, you know, because we typically end up spending less than we budgeted, all bid, less than what it has been.
Yeah, I think at this point we'd like to advocate letting it play because we, we did a really different budgeting approach this year, and we're still learning from that, so it's a little more vague how we're gonna end up this year.
Yeah.
But obviously, yes, our next budget is gonna be very serious.
And, and so I'm not suggesting, and wouldn't be party at any sort of major overhaul, especially that's something that would be, you know, dramatic in terms of services. However, we do have, it, it has come up earlier, we've got some personnel savings, as I understand, in Public Works. Those will be, those positions will be filled, there'll be some, you know, less expenditure in that than we want, or that, that we anticipated had they been hired initially.
Yeah, and then likewise, we're running low on the police department, again, and we did have some savings built in, but we're still having trouble with, you know, filling those positions, so there'll be some savings there.
Sure, sure.
I think, I think the biggest one is just walking in extra special process and doing, like we did this time, really comprehensive, look, you know, your all, other alternative, you could say, no, I don't want to go down that extra bit, you know, we need to do something immediately, perhaps could, that you get a little bit more scattershot doing it at this point, and then setting up one process now and starting another process in a few months. The other one is, is if we were skating really close to our minimum and this was occurring, yeah, I'd, I'd already be back to you saying we need to do something, but at this point we're still significantly above what any kind of minimum balance that we need, so that's one of the reasons why we're a little more comfortable.
Well, you know, and it just from, I mean, it might be a way, and, and it's not certainly our position to manage how these, how these budgets are actually implemented, but you know, it seems that any salary savings we can capture in, in open positions would be a pretty good way to, to, you know, acquire a little more unencumbered dollars or, or potential money that could be rolled into the next year without impacting the plans that we have in place with all of the other budgeted areas. So it, it, it just seems, and again, it's far bid from me, but it, it, it seems that that might be a way that, that the department heads and managers could find a way to save some money if we do have that without impacting others, and not look at a departmental bottom line and say, oh, I got 50,000 bucks that didn't get spent, but you know, I mean, I might say it wouldn't spend, I just ought to be off, careful with that. Yes, I'm, I'm done. Okay, when, when will the auditors, as you said, have done, or they're just?
They're, they draft our report as well, and so they're in the process of working on that. Typically, I'll get that back sometime late November, end of November, review it, and then go back to them for issuance, and so I anticipate it'll be issued in sometime in mid to late December, that's the kind of typical scenario.
Okay, I thought we were picking up a little this year, but we're, we're gonna run the same program we were doing last year.
Yeah, well, last year we actually didn't get our audit issued until mid-January.
Yeah.
And that was, that was, that was really pushing hard at that point too, but yeah, just given our circumstances.
You're actually in software now, to where.
Yeah.
Big difference, huh?
It was a lot better this time going through the preparation.
Is your family seeing more of you as well?
Yeah.
Very good. Anybody else? Okay, thanks, Mark. It's good to know that we had you mining this stuff, I'm always comfortable, you know, that you're there keeping an eye on the numbers, good job. Faces and comments tonight. And hearing that, we'll go to the business agenda, which is a single item, the first reading of an ordinance repealing an ordinance. Mark, if you could fill us in on this, this repeals ordinance 1297, and we have new language around the tree advisory board.
This, what this would do, would increase the membership available to that board from five persons to seven persons. I think I mentioned at our last joint meeting that we're, we're always looking for a younger help, and so this is an effort to try and cultivate that. I was hoping that we were gonna be able to cross pollinate from the tree campus board at the university with students, or a student to populate this board as well. That group's still kind of getting their feet under them in terms of having students onboard, they're actually, it looks like they're gonna be spending their first term getting advertisements out to recruit students to serve in the next two terms, so we're just, I had to make kind of a judgment call, we're a little bit out ahead of them right now, so I'm hoping at some point when they, when that's better populated at their end that we could talk about that sharing of, of resources.
If we, if we go seven, is that because you have media problems with quorum? If you have your current numbers and all of a sudden you shouldn't have a quorum from seven rather than from five?
It goes from three to four for a quorum.
I was wondering if that's gonna be a problem, Mark, based on?
No, no, and I don't think so, no, that's not been a problem. Yeah.
Yeah, that's what, that's what I'm asking.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I, I sit reassuring.
Yeah.
There you go. Any other questions for Mark on this? I will read the ordinance by title, first reading, an ordinance repealing ordinance 1297, and replacing it with the provisions of this ordinance relating to the tree advisory board, and we will revisit this next time. Any council comments tonight? So we have both an urban renewal meeting and a work session, is there anybody here for the urban renewal item? We will do that last, and we'll go ahead and do work session, and we'll get these good people here, here, and I can come back around, because Mark's gotta be here for the whole time.
Yeah, I gotta get ready, yeah, you're not gonna get me off my hoods.
I figured, I was, I was looking at that and trying to juggle whose feet could I get out of the fire quickest, and I think if these guys win, you look smart. Okay, so with that, if I could have a motion to adjourn this meeting to work session? In favor?
Aye.
Let's take five minutes and meet in the back.